All the March twenty first, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners to order. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Van Tucker to lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. What kind and gracious heavenly father, our privilege has come to you tonight for Thanksgiving for your many blessings that you bestowed and continue to bestow on each and every one of us. We thank you, Lord, for a country that's living in peace and not war. We thank you for all the freedoms that's been afforded by your grace, living in the United States of America. But at the same time, we realize freedom isn't free. We realize we need to do our part and always be diligent under your grace and mercy to keep it that way, but be with those folks that are in turmoil and strife and war and horrors of war across the globe. And we ask that you bless them in every way that you can, extend your hand of mercy upon them. Again, Lord, thank you for all your blessings, watch over us, go with us, lead, guide us, direct us, protect us, and help all we do. Be in your will. For it's in Jesus's name, my Lord and risen Savior, I praise you and pray, and amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, looking for approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Motion by Commissioner Harris. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Looking for approval of February twenty-third board retreat and March seventh meeting minutes?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker. Do I have a second?
Tucker.
Second by Commissioner Marion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And ayes have it. We have the consent agenda. I'll turn it over to our county manager, Chris Knopf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is request to purchase roll-off containers for Public Works. And this is a purchase request before the board. Secondly, the tax department end-of-month summaries, charges, and reports for your approval. A position reclassification is the third item in the finance department. Fourth, to appoint deputy finance officers and deputy purchasing agents. Fifth item is a health department smaller equipment request, and this is for a medical chair. And the final item is to surplus a truck in parks and recreation. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is that a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Marion. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna give Commissioner Marion just a few seconds for that date on the fire in Logue.
All right, everybody knows what's been going on up or have heard about what's happening in Logue. Right up there this morning and had an opportunity to meet with our fire marshal, Jimmy Ashburn. And I'd like to call him up to give y'all a little assessment of what's been happening this past weekend. And all the great work that all the fire departments come together and and nobody, nobody was killed and then everybody's house was safe and that's the main goal. So Jimmy, if you would, fill us in.
Good evening, commissioners. Just to let you know that school camp fire department was called out to a woods fire Saturday at sixteen oh seven, which is four o'clock, for about a half acre fire. When they got there with an engine, they proceeded to put same out, but the wind got up and kind of pushed it up into the mountains, got away from them. So then we had to go back to an all-call status, which is calling the county fire department, getting all that lined up for the fires and kind of went on through the night through yesterday. But we had a lot of help from departments in the county, outside agencies from Stokes, Yakkin, Wilkes, that come in and helped us with this fire. And I thank those guys for helping us out with that. But anyway, to give you the lowdown on the fire, it was a hundred and ninety-five acres that totally burned. Eighty-five percent is contained at this time at four o'clock meeting that we had with the operations chief of the forestry service. So with that being said, we had forty structures that were protected. Twenty-seven of those were homes, residential homes. Two were voluntary evacuated from their house that day, Saturday, Sunday morning. That's pretty much it. They called for some rain Tuesday, Wednesday morning, hoping that will help us out with the rest of the fires. There's a few hot spots that the forestry service is working on. They got a few hand lines for tonight. So all of the departments have went back to their designated areas, which, you know, wherever that's located, either in county or outside of county. So today we had, I think, Wilkes County, wasn't it, and Yakkin coming up and helping us. So we appreciate those guys. We returned a favor. Yeah, I got a good video of that. I told, I took Mr. Marion up around the area and showed him the location. We're really lucky, really lucky.
Are you, you may not can say, you know, feel like you know what started the fire?
Yes, sir. We, we, we already know. At this time, we're just gonna leave it undetermined, but yeah, we, we gotta just keep it that way for right now.
What road was this on?
It was one thirteen Gator Place Way.
And that's off of Haystack or?
Off, off of Hidden Valley.
Hidden Valley?
Yes.
Okay, all right, yeah.
So, you know, the guys done a good job. Nobody hurt, nobody killed. You know, we, we had a good turnout, so.
Pass on to our volunteer firemen, to the state park service, always play the game. We appreciate the response and all that they've done. Paint that flag monumentally, but appreciate that.
Thank you.
Was the helicopter surviving or was it actually carrying water?
It was actually carrying water from, yeah, out of the pond.
Lost it deep.
Yeah. Two hundred and forty gallons, by the way. I told you a hundred, but it was seven hundred and forty. I wouldn't talk to him, so. Any other questions?
All right, we have a special recognition, Surrey Central High School Shooting Team. If you folks will, will call your name, you'll come forward. Be recognized. All right, I'll start, I'll start with Marty Southern and Chuck Burton. Y'all come forward, please. I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read, I'm just gonna read one of them and because they read the same. This is to Marty Southern and Chuck Burton, the coaches for Surrey Central High School Golden Eagle Shooting Team. You hereby present this certificate of recognition for your leadership, service, and dedication to development of Surrey County athletes resulting in Surrey Central High School Shooting Team A placing seventeenth out of forty-one senior teams. And the B team placing thirty-fourth out of forty-one teams at the North Carolina Wildlife District Seven Youth Hunter Education Skills Tournament. Presented this the twenty-first day of March, twenty twenty-two by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, Larry Johnson, Mark Marion, and Van Tucker. Congratulations. Appreciate you.
Okay, we thought that he's read the same.
Okay, White Burton. And it's there, White Burton, Surrey Central High School Golden Eagle Senior Shooting Team A. Hereby presented this certificate of recognition for shooting a perfect score of two hundred in the shotgun trap competition. Breaking twenty clay truck targets from five different stations with zero misses. Placing you in a tied position for individual first place. You also led your team with the highest overall score from four events with a total of six hundred and sixty-seven points out of eight hundred. Ending twenty-sixth place out of two hundred and seventy-five participants. Contribution to the team at the NC Wildlife District Seven Youth Hunter Education Skills Tournament helped the Surrey Central Senior Shooting Team A place seventeenth out of forty-one senior team. A team of talented young men and ladies has not only worked hard to achieve success, but to develop lasting bonds. Presented this the twenty-first day of March, twenty twenty-two by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, Larry Johnson, Mark Marion, and Van Tucker. All right, Houston Wicker. Houston Wicker, Surrey Central High School Golden Eagles Senior Shooting Team A. Is hereby presented this certificate of recognition for shooting a perfect score of two hundred in the shotgun trap competition. Breaking twenty clay targets from five different stations, zero misses. Placing you in a tied position for individual first place. Contribution to the team at the NC Wildlife District Seven Youth Hunter Education Skills Tournament helped the Surrey Central Senior Shooting Team A place seventeenth out of forty-one senior teams. A team of talented young men and ladies has not only worked hard to achieve success, but to develop lasting bonds. Standing this twenty-first day of March, twenty twenty-two by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, Larry Johnson, Mark Marion, and Van Tucker. I'll be one more. Adam Southern. Central High, Adam Southern, Surrey Central High School Golden Eagles Senior Shooting Team A. Hereby presented this certificate of recognition. Shooting a perfect score of two hundred in the shotgun trap competition. Breaking twenty clay targets from five different stations to zero misses, placing you in a tied position for individual first place. Contributions of the team at the NC Wildlife District Seven Youth Hunter Education Skills Tournament helped the Surrey Central Senior Shooting Team A place seventeenth out of forty-one senior teams. A team of talented young men and ladies has not only worked hard to achieve success, but to develop lasting bonds. Standing this twenty-first day of March, twenty twenty-two by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, Larry Johnson, Mark Marion, and Van Tucker. Good. I, I think mine all do read the same, so I'm gonna read the recognition and I'll call you all three. This is a, for you three gentlemen. No, two gentlemen and a lady. This is your award certificate of recognition for your contribution to the two thousand and twenty-two Surrey Central Senior Shooting Team A placing seventeenth out of forty-one senior teams in the North Carolina Wildlife District Seven Youth Hunter Education Skills Tournament. Your team of talented young men and ladies has not only worked, has not only worked hard to achieve success, but to, to develop lasting bonds. The certificate is presented this twenty-first day of March, two thousand and twenty-two with the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, Larry Johnson, Mark Marion, and Van Tucker. And if you will, come on up and we'll give you your certificates. Fisher Freeman. Same certificate and same recognition for Grayden Spurling. Come on up, Grayden. Little bitty guy. And you don't even have to know how to shoot. Uh, Grayden, great shooting. Hold your gun. Somebody might want to get your picture. All right, we good. And last but certainly not least, Anna Schu. Anna, come on in. Same certificate of recognition and wow, what great shooting. What kind of weaponry for the shooting competition? The twenty-two's or, anybody know what caliber it was or twenty-two hand shot? Great, well, congratulations. I wouldn't want you mad at me, how it ended, if you can.
I'm gonna call all my folk, folks up here, Samuel Branch, Grayson Collins, Tyler Gage, Cooper Kozowski, Hagan Simpson. Y'all just stand right here. Okay, this is for County of Surrey Certificate of Recognition. Golden Eagle Shooting Team B is hereby presented this certificate of recognition for your contribution to the two thousand and twenty-two Surrey Central Shooting Team B placing thirty-fourth out of forty-one teams in the North Carolina Wildlife District Seven Youth Hunter Education Skills Tournament. Your team of talented young men and ladies has not only worked hard to achieve success, but to develop lasting bonds this twenty-first day of March, two thousand and twenty-two by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, Larry Johnson, Mark Marion, and Van Tucker. Mr. Hagan Simpson?
Okay, Cooper? A? Allen? And Mr. Branch? Marty here is, okay, if you want to get that to him?
Thank you, sir.
Maybe you want to make some yelling.
Chuck, go on, come on up.
Talk him up a little bit.
Talk him up right here a little bit.
Tell us a little bit about.
Right on a little bit.
All right. So now we're proud of them. Most of those parents are here tonight and glad they're here to support their kids. We appreciate the county commissioners doing that, Mr. Goins and Mark and Eddie and all you guys. We appreciate that. I've been doing this for about six years now, I guess, coaching and Marty's been doing it probably four years, about four years now. This is the best, this is the best we've ever done in competition. We've had a couple of guys, actually all three of them shot straight. We've done it alternately in practice, but they've never done it together. And we went to competition, we told everybody, just, you know, everybody bring your A-game that day, do the best you can. And they finally made it all quick that day. They, all three of them shot a straight that day, White, Houston, and Adam. Which really helped out a lot. It's, it's a, if you've never done this, it's a, it's, you know, it's not baseball, it's not football, it's not track. But it's very competitive. We were there that day. There's probably fifteen hundred, two thousand people that's at Hunting Creek in Harmony, North Carolina. And District Seven is the largest district in North Carolina. So like I said, there's two hundred and seventy-five kids. That was on the A-team. That wasn't counting the B-team. That was just the A-team competing that day. So it's very highly competitive and it takes a lot of time, a lot of practice. And it takes a lot from the parents, which we greatly appreciate all the parents. It takes a lot of time from the parents to make sure the kids get to practice, a lot of resources. It's a very expensive sport. But they did really great, man. I'm telling you, from time we got on the trap shoot that morning, we, we were all pumped up when we did the two hundred. We got on the twenty-two rifle range right after that. They done a great on twenty-two rifles, then archery range. And then prior to that, they have to take a test. And that test consists of a hundred questions that is on the hunter's safety skills book, what they're actually go through before they get their hunter's safety skills card, and also all the regulations of North Carolina. So they have to learn all those things to be competitive on the test. And, and the test is the most, is the hardest thing throughout the whole competition. But I'm proud of them. They've really done good. Like I said, White shot for six years. Adam has shot for four years right now. Four years now. Grayden has shot for how long? Six years. He's, he's as long as member as White. So we all lost one guy this year and the rest of them, I think, well, Anna's been on team for how long, Anna? Four years? I think so, about four years. Fisher been on team for two years. Cooper's been on team for two years and the rest of the guys, this their first year. So, you know, we're looking to expand. We won't, we'd like to get more shooters, anybody that can reach out in the community to see if there's other kids that would like to be on the shooting team. We'd love to have them. It's a great sport. It's a great bond building, just like the, the reward says. It's building relationships that last for a long time. It's just a really great thing. And we also, like all other sports teams, you're not, we're not funded by the school. We have to raise our own money, so we have to do that. So we're always looking for support in the community and support from family, support from businesses. So we're always looking for that. Anybody interested in helping the, the team and support us, that goes a long way. As you've seen, the price of ammo, it's not cheap these days. And they do give us a little bit of discount because it's a shooting team for kids in the school, but we don't get a whole lot of discounts. So it's pretty expensive, especially if we want to practice and be competitive. So we appreciate that. Marty on.
I can't add anything to that. I just appreciate the commissioners for the recognition. I believe this is a step in the right direction for where we need to be again. Surrey Central was one of the first teams to start a hunter's safety team, much less go to the state. So I think we need to be there again, and I think this is a step in the right direction to that. So thank everybody for their support again.
I'm gonna say real quick, it, it's a, an honor. I got to serve Central Middle School as a principal and then went with them to some of them, to Surrey Central for one year. And you talking about a good group of kids. They are. And it's, it's neat to see how much they grown since I, since I've stepped away, but appreciate y'all.
Well, I want, one more thing, if you don't, Israel Freeman helped us that a lot, and I forgot to put his name on, but we'll take a picture. Israel, come on. Israel has also helped us coach team this year. He did all the work on the archery stuff and I'd like to say I apologize for, it was trying to get everything together. We sort of left him off and I forget, I apologize. But Israel, come on up and get your picture.
Get right here in front, right here. Thank y'all. He's slinging that stuff everywhere. I just had to put it in.
Slinging that stuff everywhere.
I didn't have time. He's slinging that stuff everywhere.
What do you want?
I'm glad I don't tip, Scotty.
I, I should have said this before, before Commissioner Johnson's traveling tonight, and that's why he is not with us. So just, just a point of information, you good. At this time, we'll have our open forum. That's the time for citizens to come forward and speak about, just about anything that's on their mind. We'll give you about three minutes to speak. We just ask that you state your name and your telephone number when you come up, so we'll open the open forum at this time.
Wait just a minute, wait just a minute. Oh, yeah, okay.
I know.
Start over?
Yeah.
Nevada, love, any, V as in Victor, A, David, A, last is love, L O V E, three one two, two zero three, eighty-three, zero one. Tonight, my subject is about parts contract not being renewed. Surrey County citizens are asking for the transportation contract to be renewed. Parts of my Betty's transportation may, may overlap, but they do not duplicate. Parts is a park and ride. Why Betty is a door-to-door service. To date, why Betty does not satisfactorily meet the services citizens would love to have from public transportation. Mr. Harris and Mr. Johnson are members of White Betty's Board, and Mr. Marion is a member of Parts Board. That's quite interesting. Do you plan to remove yourself from these boards since you've canceled the contract for parts? Now, are you sitting on the boards due to the Senate Bill eleven ninety-five, Article seventeen, General Statute one thirty-six, dash two ten through two thirteen? Okay, because it has to do with providing, or it's a mandate to provide public transportation in rural areas, knowing that the tax rate is very low because of the low density of population. So it wasn't a problem then, so why is it a problem today? Do you want us, the public, to believe that you want public transportation in Surrey County to be a monopoly? Because if you skew out parts, you only have White Betty. White Betty is headquartered in Surrey County. Parts is headquartered in Guilford County. Okay? The amount of taxes collected from public transportation is, is not the issue. It appears to be, from a citizen's point of view, a self-serving reason for not renewing that contract. Thank you.
Anyone else for open forum? I'll close the open forum. Sheen Lowe, African American Historical and Genealogical Society, J.J. Jones School Proposal Response.
Good evening. If it is this difference, do you know whether I intend to accept or deny this proposal? You don't? First, I want to thank everyone that has graciously spent the time and effort in bringing us thus far to this point of saving Jones School. To the commissioners, thank you. To Chris and his staff, thank you. To Ed Wolf and his staff, thank you. And last, but by no means least, to the African American Historical and Genealogical Society of Surrey County and Save Jones School Committee, which is under the auspices of us. and Save Jones School Committee, which is under the auspices of us. Thank you for your support and your unification to get to tonight and to... And most of all, I want to thank one special person for her undying devotion, Miss Adrienne Bell. Do stand grace. Let's give her a pause. I'll, um, I want to thank you people for the phone calls and the emails. Thank all the speakers for showing your, sharing your stories. It is, it is the difference. I believe that Surrey County continues, continued prosperity in economic, cultural, or civic programs we undertake. Depends on the open-mindedness of commissioners and the synergy of the county. We believe in just, justly and fairly implementing pre-enterprise. You allow us to obtain J.J. Jones with few restrictions, and we can certainly comply with anything that spells justice. The difference is this, we have suffered and still do suffer discrimination. Thus, we do not desire to impose a wrong of that move on anyone. The difference is this, you allow us to conduct this venture as we visualize as an organization. Our, and your leaders need to do whatever is necessary to continue to create jobs and opportunities for all regardless of their natural origin, race, or sex. It is this difference that everyone has the chance to work hard, pursue happiness, and earn our own success. It is this difference. Our organization preserves the beautiful, fortunately told history of J.J. Jones. Many of us can share the untold experiences of the good old days of J. Jones, Jones now. It is this difference that will define the course of our history and our people. I must share a personal account of getting employed in Surrey County. I applied, of course. But when I applied, I didn't have the interview of what was your grade point average? Uh, how did you do in student teaching? I got A plus in student teaching. But nobody in Surrey County knew that because nobody asked me what I did in student teaching. They didn't care. Asked, I was asked, why do you wear your hair in that style? Well, my response was, why do you wear your hair in the shash? Is your sister a military? Response, well, if you do something for your school that you think is organized your school and superintendent tell you to change it, do you stand up for your school? Does that make you a military? Um, and besides, my parents never named their children military. I was applying all over Surrey County. And at that time, the principals did the interviews and, and hired people. I was told to take a job with the FBI. Well, my response to that was, if I wanted a job with the FBI, I wouldn't ask Surrey County to help me. My cousin was the only black executive in the FBI. If I wanted a job, I could have gotten one. What black organizations do you belong? They told me, I told them push. Well, the person that was asking me this question, he didn't even know what push stand for. People United to Save Humanity. End of the story. I waited a whole year before I got a job in Surrey County because I refused to leave. I wasn't going to be run away from home. I had three classmates that graduated the same time I did. Two went to Maryland, one went to the military service. All of us were at graduate in the top of our classes, but our majors was history. But I was told blacks couldn't teach white students history. But I stayed and I waited a year. In August nineteen seventy-five, I finally went to Mr. Gentry and I told him I wanted a job. And he on the telephone and he called Hope and he said, you have a job. And I worked here twenty-four years before I left. This is an example of not waiting to hire us because of whatever reason there might be. Is the difference Commissioner Johnson spoke about everyone getting to stay in the Surrey County and are employed here. Well, we didn't. My class didn't. It is this difference that led us to be able to accept your proposal with pride, strength, and benevolence. It is this difference that has molded Surrey heritage, tradition, and success. We dispel those traditions that keep us separated and different. It is this difference that helps every day ordinary people to flourish. We encourage our membership to strive for the best. We have passionate, inviting volunteers and service professionals in audience. I invite you to become magnificent women and phenomenal men. And to make, that make leaders that will keep Surrey County prosperous. I leave you with the prosperity that makes a difference to Ag of Surrey County. Thank you, Ag. Thank you, commissioners. And at this time, I would like to call all the members of Ag to come up and stand with me. These people work very hard and are still working hard. Turn around this way because I was... We want the commissioners to come stand with us too, because this was a, this was a...
Yeah, right here's the best one.
Are we ready? Looking good, feeling good? All right. You know, I better, get over here. Back there. Thank you. There we go. Lovely. Lovely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. We gladly accept your proposal.
Yeah, we are. Just like we appreciate that and, uh, we, uh, your approve, uh, your acceptance has been noted. Uh, Christie Preston, our Department of Social Services Director, with the director's report.
Good evening. I just have two, well, actually a, a third announcement, but, um, just three. Um, the first item in your packet from social services this month is an article highlighting our agency's partnership with Benchmarks. This is a program that our foster care staff engaged with. Um, coming up on two years ago, this, um, program enables all children who are entering foster care to be screened for trauma and then to receive a, um, an intensive assessment to determine what type of mental health services, um, the child may need. At this point, um, we're on our own. It was started as a pilot and, uh, we were working very closely with Benchmarks, the organization, but they turned us loose, um, middle of January. And right now, we've, we've had a lot of new staffs. So right now, Nikki just informed me that we've got sixty-five percent of our staff have been trained on the trauma screening process and we're very excited about it. But we were featured in Benchmarks, which is a statewide agency. We were featured in their newsletter. Um, this was in December, I think. So, um, just wanted to share that with you. Um, I can answer any questions if you have any or, or Ms. Hall is here as well, if you have questions about it. The second item is just some information. This is the annual Adult Services Survey Report. We don't talk a lot about adult services. It seems like child welfare and food nutrition and some of those other large programs get the majority of our attention. But we have a very strong adult services unit in the agency. They do, um, a tremendous amount of work. This is the unit that's responsible for investigating, uh, reports of elder abuse, disabled, uh, individual abuse, financial exploitation. It's a really big, uh, big jobs, big unit. Unit, there's only eight of them. Um, they're led by Suzy Branch and, um, we actually just cut, got, um, our audit results this morning. I don't have them on paper, but Nikki and I participated in the exit conference and they passed with flying colors. So you'll get that at your May meeting. But this annual survey just gives you some information about adult protective services, guardianship, all of the programs, um, that this unit serves. Gives you some information about the whole state and lets you compare how Surrey County is doing, um, against the rest of the state. Just quick highlights, um, in twenty twenty-one, they investigated, uh, ninety-eight reports of abuse, neglect, or financial exploitation. They visited sixty-three homes, um, in situations where people make an adult protective services report, but the allegations don't meet the definition. Many, many times, they will still assign a social worker to go out into the community and make a home visit to that individual. We average around, um, right around sixty individuals per month that we are the guardian for, which means we're responsible for making most of the decisions in that individual's life. This unit also provides monitoring for adult care homes in the county. Um, we work with EMS very closely on individuals who, um, would need extra assistance if they were stuck or trapped in their home during an emergency or a disaster situation. Um, this unit also does crisis and energy, which is around twenty-three hundred individuals served in, uh, December, January, and February. They also take care of unclaimed bodies in the county. So they are, um, a very busy unit. They do a really good job and that, the report, I think, if you poke around in it a little bit, I think you'll see that Surrey County, um, stacks up very well against some of the other counties in the state. If you have questions, I can answer those. Ms. Hall supervises that crowd. She can, uh, answer them as well.
You mentioned unclaimed bodies.
Yes.
Do we have many of those?
Uh, in twenty twenty-one, we had twelve. Uh, so we average around one a month. Um, we, if bodies go unclaimed, our agency gets notified. We attempt to locate family. Um, we make contact with the schools of anatomy to see if they are interested in a donation. Most of the time, they are not. Uh, they, they stay pretty full. But, um, we take care of cream, uh, cremating the individual and then we have, um, burial site at Fisher River Park. Occasionally, it's, it's been a while, but occasionally we'll have a memorial service and, and say a little something about each of the individuals. And, um, we typically, I think we've invited, it's been a couple of years, I guess, since we did that, but, um...
Are you typically very successful in identifying the person? I mean, we know who they are.
Yeah. Yeah, they, um, they just, just no one claims them. They don't have the financial resources typically. And I would say it's ticked up a little bit, um, with COVID.
And who pays for the expense? Once you guys get that unclaimed body, nobody represented the family you were able to contact?
We pay for the cremation and then we have, uh, vendors in the community to donate, um... Yes, the things, what do you? Footstone, I couldn't come up. I was thinking headstone, but it's not a headstone. It's just a footstone. And, um, I think in the past, Daniel and his staff have, uh, dug the spots for them. Yeah, if you're driving into the park, they're on the left-hand side. Mm-hmm. Yeah. And then we, in the past, we've had ministers volunteer to come say a few words. And we, we typically try to invite family members to that. Um, I mean, it is, it's just a sad situation all the way around, but we try to do, we try to be as respectful and as we possibly can, so... All right, one last thing. I got this after your packets went out. This is an invitation from the North Carolina Association of County Boards of Social Services to their business meeting. Being held this year, Friday, April the eighth, at the McKimmon Center in Raleigh. It looks like they've got a, a full day of, um, speakers and one of the speakers is to be announced and I haven't heard any information about who that's going to be. But the agenda is, um, just a little bit of information about county boards, about, um, there's a, a space on here for updates from the Department of Health and Human Services. I think the school of government's going to participate to provide some information on the, um, legal side of being a DSS board member. If you're interested in going, we do have some money in our training budget for this year. So if you're interested in going, feel let me know. I'll be happy to register you. And then, um, if you want to go down the night before, it does look like they're going to start early. If you want to go down the night before, we've got funds that we can accommodate your trip. Just let me know. The cutoff date for booking, it says, is March twenty-fifth. Um, but we got this, we didn't get this till Wednesday or Thursday last week. Sometimes they extend that date when the information goes out late. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Party Needham Plan Director and Project Manager, Rezoning Public Hearing, Hassel Cook, requests two, two-one-one-seven West Pine Street, boundary case numbers ZCR twelve eighteen.
Good morning or good evening, commissioners. Um, this is rezoning case number CZR twelve eighteen. Advocate's name is Mr. Hassel Cook. Current zoning on the property is, he's wanting to rezone the property to rural agriculture. It's approximately two-point-seven-nine acres on West Pine Street. It's a general use rezoning. It's an open area of low to medium business development along West Pine Street. All adjoining property is currently zoned highway business. The staff commuted in person and via phone with him in February twenty-twenty-two and advised that the rezoning request does not meet the twenty forty land use plan adopted by the county. The planning board, as of its March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, approved the adoption of the zoning amendment, citing that the applicant owned the land since nineteen seventy-six and had paid enough taxes, he should be able to build his house there. Um, all of the, was six members there of the board. They all voted unanimously.
Any questions? When was this property? Was it, does it go back to when the zoning began in the county that was changed the highway business?
Yes, sir. Two thousand and one.
Owners at that time, history lesson, what the owners had, what was the impound of the owners at that time?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Chris?
I, I think it's in that area between North Surrey and, uh, Gentry Middle. And most of that property, as the land use plan calls for us, for highway commercial. Majority of it's commercial. And I guess twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, county put in, um, public sewer in that area. It's one of the two areas of gravity sewer, uh, the area between the schools and also out in the interstate district.
Basically right across from Franklin Fire Department. Across from the vet. Yeah. Yeah, Parker Building there.
Yeah. I'll ask him questions. All right, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. Mr. Cook, how, how you doing tonight?
Fine, fine.
You, uh, say you wanted to rezone this so you can live on it, a piece of it?
Actually, I'm closing ways the property I'm living on now, so gotta go.
You've owned this land since when?
Seventy-six.
Yeah. And I might not should, but I'm, I'm getting so old, I don't think you'll mind. Can you tell us how old you are?
Be eighty-two the next one.
I understand.
Eighty-two. God bless. Sure would appreciate it.
Yes, sir. I don't, I don't think there...
I don't think there was.
I don't think there's gonna be any problem.
I don't think there's any of that development there. I think he owned it before there was any development there at all, really.
Yeah, right, that's true.
Yeah.
I think you ought to.
There wasn't nothing.
I think you've earned the right to do about what you want to do with, if it's legal.
I sure do appreciate it.
Yes, sir. We appreciate you coming.
Okay.
Statement of consistency.
Public hearing.
I'm gonna close our regular meeting and open a public hearing on rezoning case ZZCR 1218. Anybody want to speak for or against that rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And I'll make a motion that we adopt a statement of consist, consistency regarding this case. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Marion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
I'd like to make a motion to change the zoning from HB to RA, Mr. Hassel Cook.
I have a motion by Commissioner Marion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that and we're happy to do that, Mr. Cook.
Have a second by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion? All, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion. All right. Ed Walts County Attorney. I have two items, Spencer Mill redevelopment in a local agreement and the Westfield Volunteer Fire Department Protection, other services revised agreement.
Yes, sir. Which do you want to take first?
Spencer Mill redevelopment, interlocal agreement.
The interlocal agreement was circulated, I guess, six months ago or eight months ago. And the only modification has been a change where our monetary contribution is advanced. Now, I don't have the agreement in front of me, so I don't know. It, it is in our fiscal year. Initially, it had been, I guess, two fiscal years. And they have moved it back to the current fiscal year. That, that's the only appreciable difference.
I, I had struggled hearing that a little bit, Ed, so I might be redundant on what you just said. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I do have the thing in front of me and the, the board did pass this several months ago and it was some discussion at that time. I'm all for the, the county's participation in this project for Mount Airy. And have been at that time when the Mount Airy representatives, I believe it was Gene Reese and Brian Grody and maybe a couple of the town commissioners came, maybe John Colley and Steve Yocely, I believe. The, the request was up to the amount of one million and a half, 1.5 million. And at that time, we had some discussion about, well, we may not be obligated to pay that much. It just depends on how much more money they raise. There was even a discussion, I think, that I was interested in helping finish the steeple, but not build the footing and the foundation.
But. But Dan, you're, you're exactly right. What, what has happened is that any, any dollars that are contributed to the project.
Yeah, I get it.
We would we, we would have a reduction in our contribution.
Yeah.
Is that where you're going?
That's where I'm going with that, except my question to you is, does this interlocal agreement, is it just a basic instrument for a county and a, and a municipality to do business? Or would you say, I'd say yes to that, but I, I'll let you answer it. And my second question is, you know, when I start reading and it looked like it's very eloquently put together, I compliment the city's attorney for such words. But when it says whether such cost or expense was incurred before, on or after the execution of this interlocal agreement, that basically we shall pay it. And it says sums paid by the city to the developers, consultants, contractors, cost of materials, asbestos removal, grading site, on and on and on and on, design, construction of the parking lot and related facilities. It looks to me like what this really does is come hay tees or high water, the county is going to be found a place to pay that 1.5 million dollars, not just to help start building the building like we originally were requested to do. I'm not going to catch the board one vote short tonight and, and even suggest we go back and revisit that. But just as a matter of principle, that vote has been made and had and it was a three-two vote and the county had, it was in the majority vote that the county was going to give the 1.5. I just guess I want to ask you, is this a standard way of doing business between the county and the municipality? Question one. And question two, does this, does this tie our hands as a county a little bit more? Does it hamstring us just a little bit more to give the city a lot of opportunities to find sidewalks and power lines and parking lots and adjacent parking lots and two or three streets that it names here? Does it, does it, in your opinion, give us a better opportunity to make darn sure that we're going to give them all that 1.5 million?
Well, Dan, we have saved ourselves whatever contribution is received that would reduce our contribution to the city. So, so that, that's done. And, you know, I don't think that we are, are going out on a limb on this. I, I think that we know what we're looking at. It, the, the agreement is, is, is well drafted. Hugh Campbell did it and I, I approve of it. And there, there may be some things that jump up that are unexpected, but I, I don't anticipate that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I was just, perhaps the clerk may have this or the county manager. The section 102, the county board of commissioners voted at its meeting of March 18th to fund up to 1.5 million. Do you have the actual motion that was made that night? Okay, I was just curious. But yeah, I, I, I must say, I think it's a very thorough document. It doesn't miss, miss, miss much. And I assume the county and the city can execute it in good faith and and that's about all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I was gonna say that, I think we just have to do this to get the page that they're gonna do it the right way.
Yeah. Do we have the actual motion or are we able to get it?
He's looking for it.
Again, we just, you know, I don't know, we go back and revisit that vote tonight, but just as a matter of principle, I would like to see if we've deviated from our original intent or broadened the county's capacity to participate to the fullest in the up to 1.5 million dollars that we discussed in that previous motion. I was thinking.
When, when I reviewed the thing, it, it appeared to be along the lines of what I thought the board was, was in favor of.
Would you like me to read the motion? It stated upon motion of Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Goins, the board voted three to two, Chairman Marion, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Goins with yeas, Commissioner Harris and Commissioner Tucker with nays, to fund 1.5 million maximum over six years at $250,000 a year. If any funding is provided by Golden Leaf or other funding sources, half of Surrey County's funding commitment will be reimbursed or reduced.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the agreement?
Motion to accept the agreement by Commissioner Marion. I have a second. I'll second that. Any discussion?
I just, again, want to make sure we're consistent with our original intent. I was hoping, you know, there might be a chance we wouldn't, in the, in the end, have to contribute that much towards the Spencer project. But my questions were just to make sure that we were not committing anything further than was consistent with the original motion, since it was part of a controversial split.
Dan, but, Dan, in, in response to that, that, you know, if, if we end up with grant funds, our, our out-of-pocket will be reduced. I think that's just an unknown at this point.
I'm good.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, Westfield Volunteer Fire Department, fire protection, other services revised agreement.
Gentlemen, this is a we, we have a agreement with each volunteer fire department and that they, we have tried to keep them as uniform as possible. And some departments offer services that aren't offered by others. And so we sort of did a generic thing. And at this point, Westfield is offering additional services. They have come up with, and, and have become certified with rescue services, policies, whatever. And, and they need our agreement with the fire department to voice that. And so what is before you is a proposed agreement. And, and it, it differs from the, the rest of the agreements with other volunteer fire departments, but it could be a template for those that also offer rescue services. But at, at this point, we are asking that the Westfield agreement be approved and we need the board's, I guess, approval or direction for other agreements to be modified for those departments that have stepped up and offered rescue services so that we could modify those agreements in, in the same function.
I'm, I'm having a little bit of trouble with the audio on. Ed, Chris, can you just sum this up in your opinions, county manager, of what the objective of this request is?
In order for the Westfield Volunteer Fire Department to, I think, receive its latest certification, if that's correct, their contract needs to reflect the services they're actually providing. So they're not only providing fire protection now, but they're providing light rescue services.
That's correct.
Thing for the commitment from the county going forward?
No.
It's y'all doing that within your budget, right?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Good luck with the whistle fire department officer there. Chiefs could not be here tonight, so I'm standing for them. Basically, what we're proposing is modifying our contract so that legally we're providing an additional service. It's not at any additional cost at this point. We found it within our own funds to do the service, get certifications free through the college and basically want to cover insurance wise, so that there's not some liability. We're providing a service without being covered in our contract for that service. We've also obtained certifications through the state and been recognized as a light rescue provider. So all this in the works, this is basically the final step.
So this is part of your need for liability insurance coverage?
Basically, it boils down to
That's what it is.
The legal ramifications of it, yes, sir.
I understand.
And we also have a contract with Stokes County. We're doing the same thing in Stokes County.
I think Ed mentioned, I think he broke up, but I think Ed thinks it'd be a good idea for all of the fire contracts to reflect this, whether the department's doing it currently or not, so that in the future, we're not having to tackle these one at a time. All of the fire contracts are uniform, so.
Yeah, that, that, that's exactly right, Chris. Currently, we have a uniform contract, but it, it does not address the rescue issue. So what, what I would propose is that we circulate a revised agreement for those departments that do offer rescues, just to recognize that fact. I mean, Westfield has, has, has required our recognition of that and I expect the other departments that offer the service also need that recognition.
Mr. Chairman, my last question. The, are our insurance carriers, are they in the loop on this as far as our liability insurance coverage, Ed, in regards to these interlocal agreements between the fire departments and the county and how they're adjusted and amended going forward? Do we have a responsibility, perhaps? That's a question for you, Chris, I don't know.
Eddie, I think that the volunteer fire departments have their own insurance. They're not county insured.
Okay, so they're covered from a liability perspective as well as the county? Sir?
Yeah, I, I mean, the county is, is covered independently.
Okay, all right.
I mean, it, it, it would be covered through ECOM and EMS.
Do we require volunteer fire departments, in this case, Westfield, to, to keep on file here at the county documentation in regards to their liability insurance coverage? Jimmy's motion just said yes, so.
I, I, I think we do, yes.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to make sure we got our eyes dotted.
Yeah, and, and I'll follow up on that. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yes, you would.
Looking for a motion?
Motion to accept proposal to allow Westfield Motion to accept proposal to allow Westfield to move forward with this, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Krasikoff County Manager, boards and committee appointments and reappointments.
Nathan has those for you in just a moment. Following Nathan's presentation, we have a request for closed session after General County Business for personnel. Alright, a few appointments and reappointments. The first is an appointment for Ms. Sarah Bruce on the Recreation Advisory Committee. The appointment is for two years. She has a great amount of experience as a local athlete and a local youth sports volunteer.
We need to do these individual.
What's that?
Altogether.
Let's do these individually.
I'd like to make a motion on Ms. Sarah Bruce, she's in my district, I've spoken to Sarah about her interest in this. She's a wonderful young lady and I am very excited to have her volunteering with all the enthusiasm she will bring and just a wealth of knowledge, wonderful lady, and I'll make that motion.
Second, motion by Commissioner Tucker. Second by Commissioner Marion, any discussion? All in favor of appointing Sarah Bruce to Recreation Advisory Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Alright, next, Northern Regional Hospital Board of Trustees, reappointment for Mr. Brian Johnson for a year term. What action would the board like to take?
Motion to reappoint Brian Johnson for four years of Hospital Board of Trustees.
Motion by Commissioner Marion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Harris, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Reappointment for Andrew Wright for two years to the PTRC Workforce Development Board.
Motion to accept Andrew Wright.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker, I'll second that one. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Planning Board, reappointment of Greg Cass Stevens to a three-year term.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Greg Cass Stevens to the planning board, do I have a second? Second, second by Commissioner Marion, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Reappointment of Lisa Turner from Horn Creek to the Surrey County TDA for a three-year term.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, do I have a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor of reappointing Lisa Turner? Please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Alright, and the last one, the Voluntary Agriculture District, reappointment of Andy Simpson and David Bledsoe for three years apiece.
Motion to reappoint Andy Simpson and David Bledsoe.
Motion by Commissioner Marion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tucker, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
It's on for me.
County Commissioner, General County Business. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything this time, thank you.
Ed, while Ed's still on, I was just going to say, following up on the Westfield Baptist Church and the Boy Scout Project whereby we were trying to find a home for the old Westfield Schools' flagpole.
Yeah, artifact, yeah.
With the attached bale. Yes, Ed?
Yes, sir.
I was just going to say, I contacted the Board of Deacons with whom I'd been working to try to get minutes of the Deacons meeting and they said their policy was to, if it would work, and I told them it would, so I went out on a limb, I had to hope this works. So I have a letter here for the Westfield Baptist Church, letterhead on it. It is signed by the directors and deacons, about three of them, Paul Covington, Mark Oakley, Philip Sutphen, and officials of the Westfield Baptist Church, and it basically says during their regular quarterly meeting on December the 8th that they did vote to approve the request from Surrey County about accepting the World War II memorial stone along with the flagpole, including the small attached bale, and some of the benches from the old Westfield school grounds that had been surplus by the county. Well, that suffice as what we needed, Ed?
Yes, sir, that will be perfect. It couldn't be any better, thank you.
Alright, well, I'm going to turn that over to the county manager for record tonight. Thank you, Ed, that's all I've got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Marion?
I've just got one. Saturday night, had an opportunity to join in on a little celebration in Mount Arrie. There's 12 teams, high school teams across the triad. Participants from Realm Weston and West Oaks and all around, but we had this one young lady, she's a sophomore at Mount Arrie High School. They were raising money for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. She had raised a lot of money, but all 12 teams raised $237,013. So at eight o'clock, they want to find out who won this thing and happened to be close by, but she ended up, Ms. Jacey Avara, she is the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society Student of the Year. She raised $82,000. So we've got a celebrity and she had a tough time doing her speech and the last thing she said, maybe we can cure cancer. So I think that'd be a good little article there, Ryan. So, alright, good deal. But there's a lot of people there supporting her and Mr. Goins came by and we, a lot of good stuff there, young people doing good things. So that's the good stuff, so it's all I've got.
Yeah, I appreciate our citizens for being here tonight and speaking and we appreciate your input into our meetings and at this time, I'll ask for a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into close, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Marion, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hi. Anything? Aye. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Ray. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Tucker. Hall and State, please say aye.
Aye.